Presented this budget to you, we are projecting an 8.4 million dollar reduction in revenues compared to last year's budget. Our usual sources of funding, especially local option sales taxes, have been deeply impaired by the coronavirus crisis. Despite the challenges, this budget does not call for a property tax increase, does not call for layoffs or salary or service cuts. When we began building this year's budget, in a time of crisis from a global pandemic, economic downturn, a community still reeling from a tornado strike, we built the budget with those core values at the center, that there would be no tax increase, no city employee layoffs, we would maintain crucial services for Chattanoogaans, we would maintain capital projects that will spur economic development, and maintain safety net programs for our residents. This is a responsible budget, we are not rating our reserve fund to pay for this budget shortfall. This is a resilient budget, we are making tweaks to all departments and tightening our operation without losing core services. This is a budget based on continuing to drive results for the people of Chattanooga. This is a budget like no other, and not one that we expected to deliver to you this year. Our early projections had us in a very comfortable position this year, we were looking at 3% or more growth in our budget, and now we're facing an 8.4 million dollar reduction in revenue. Earlier this year, we held community meetings and results teams worked hard to evaluate the fantastic ideas that were put forward by our departments and agencies and community members across the city. We were excited about sharing these new ways of doing things, new programs with you for your review. We were looking at new ways to do compensation for our employees, expanded vendor outreach to increase minority contracting on city projects, new classes for police and fire, expanding early learning opportunities and support for families, increasing desperately needed homeless support, building a skate park, and so much more. But these are all now items for another day. But while those are items for another day, in response to so much of the, so many of the calls for action that we have heard in our city these past few weeks, our budget chair, as you've just heard, felt it may be helpful to recount in greater detail the programs that we have in place now, and will continue to fund that address community support. So we will go through some of our programs in affordable housing and economic development, early learning, public transit, help for the homeless, and a 360-degree care for neighbors in need, our continuum of care projects. And you'll be hearing from various administrators throughout the rest of this presentation. Thank you. And first, we'll hear from Donna Williams.
We need to bring Ms. Williams in.
Yes, sir.
Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chief Sullivan and Council Chair Henderson, we really appreciate this. I will be as brief as I can, because I have a lot of very talented colleagues who have other things to share with you. What I'm going to do, and Sharita Allen will follow me, is to give just a few highlights of some of the programs we do for affordable housing. And for those who are watching and don't realize this, this council and Mayor Burke have been in support of increasing the inventory of we, that we have of quality housing. You guys have supported the preservation of affordable housing, the production of affordable housing, and we recognize that that was not always easy, right, to, to, to support what we've been trying to do. Affordable housing is the cornerstone of strong neighborhoods, and of a growing economy, and of kids who need a, a place to go to, to, that, that it's imperative that kids have quality housing if they're going to be efficient at school. So we greatly appreciate your support. Some of this will be repetitive for you, but we do want the, the rest of the community to realize what all of us have been doing. Our home funds, which is a federal program, money that comes to us from HUD, we use those funds to attract private development in order for them to provide single-family housing that's for sale, and single-family housing that's for rent. The home funds also attract private development for the development of multifamily units, both for sale and for rent. We have the pilot program, Payment in Lieu of Taxes. To date, under the Burke administration, that program has attracted $172 million of private investment and preserved or produced 1,165 units of low to moderate income housing. Now, when we say this is actually very low housing, which is 30% of the area median income, up to 80% of the area median income, and we have pilot developments that go from 30 to 80. We also have the Affordable Housing Fund, which is a new, fairly new funding source that you all provided to us. And here are a few of the organizations that have availed themselves of this funding through authorization of the Health and Education Board, and what they are using that for. So the Housing Authority, 44 scattered site units, $400,000 award, Habitat for Greater Chattanooga, 15 vacant lots in the village in Alton Park, $197,000 award, Adamson's Develop, Adamson Developers, a brand-new six-unit, one- and two-bedroom units, $240,000, that's a development in East Chattanooga. And then we have a nonprofit, Caleb, that is, has been funded to conduct, have a third-party conduct a feasibility study for a community housing trust. And then finally, as you all are aware, we recently reallocated some funds to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we have set up rent and utility assistance that can provide up to three months of rent and utility payments for qualified applicants. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sharita.
Good afternoon, council. This is Sharita Allen.
Good afternoon.
Terrific. And I just wanted to go quickly over some of our small business programs. And some of these were born out of the request of council members roughly three years ago to focus more on small businesses and less on larger corporations. So here are some of the programs that we have been working on. These numbers are just for this existing fiscal year. So on the growing small business grants, we've awarded six grants to small businesses, construction mitigation, we have four of those related to Patton Parkway, neighborhood reinvestment funds, we're looking at six of those loans, which are also partially forgiven through a grant component, there are six of those. Innovation grants, we have two, and then the COVID-19 stabilization program, which we've launched as a result of small businesses being impacted by executive closures. We had 149, 149 grants awarded, and 32 loans awarded, and we're still working on the HUD loan component on that. And so this is in comparison to our focus on the larger corporations. So we ended up servicing or assisting roughly 200 small businesses this fiscal year. We also had one pilot program, one pilot for a large corporation, and then we had two land donation agreements. And so again, our focus has shifted from just focusing on large-scale corporations to having more of a focus on smaller businesses at the request of the council. And with that, I will turn it over to our next speaker. That'll be Ariel Ford, please.
Okay. Hi, council. Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Good evening.
Hi, thank you for letting us speak for a few minutes. So I'm going to share a little bit about what we've been doing in early learning, and then where we are planning to go in this next year. So the framework that we're using is really a three-legged stool between early learning development, family leadership and support, and health, mental health and nutrition. Next slide. Thank you. So in family leadership, we've talked about many of these things with you already, so everything from barbershop books to the census work that y'all just approved, or were notified of a grant for, that we got the other week. And the thing that's happening in the upcoming year is that we're going to be working on a parent cafe. So this is a place where families can come together for peer support, to be connected to resources, and is really just a community space specifically for families with young children, really a place to make those social connections that build strong families. And early kind of education and development, which is probably what we think of most as early learning, we have the amazing success of Seats for Success, and we've, we've been proud of that work. And I'll share some on the next slide about the transition to an emergency bridge fund that happened recently. We've supported capacity building and curriculum and technology, and this year we're very excited to do something similar to the parent cafe. So directors have a space that is kind of a more traditional director's support group, but they have asked for a place to just have peer support, solve problems together, brainstorm together, and we will be providing that space for them in this upcoming year. Finally, something that we're really proud of for this, this next year is that we are going to be partnering with HR to think about how we can bring what we call fourth trimester support, so the, the first three to six months after a baby is born, and families are thinking about coming back to work, how we can support those families once they're back in the workplace, and including lactation rooms for some of our buildings, we'll be working on figuring that out with our, with our, our team and HR. Next slide. But why do we do this part? We do this because we know that having healthy and strong families will make a healthy and strong community. And so I've got some great quotes from a mom who was able to access an early learning scholarship, she, she made too much money to access state funds, but not enough to afford high-quality childcare on her own. And we have a quote from a person who attended one of our trainings, who was able to take those strategies back and make use of them immediately. And what I want to share most about is that we were really able to take a public-private partnership and develop what we called an emergency bridge fund for childcare providers. So we spent a lot of time working on building the capacity of childcare providers to expand seats, and then COVID hit, and we were worried that childcare providers would close. There were state funds that were coming, but we know that those were going to take eight to 12 weeks to get to them, and they don't have 12 weeks worth of reserves. I also want to give a shout out to Sharita Allen, because we were able to use some of the framework that she had already built for her economic development work to streamline our process and build on what she had already done, no sense in reinventing the wheel. And in this bridge fund, which was not just City of Chattanooga, but was also Smart City Venture Fund dollars in partnership with the Early Matters Coalition and United Way, we served 50 small business owners, $260,000 of grants went out the door, impacting over 2,000 children. And that is how government can work alongside our local partners to make a difference in the lives of children, families and businesses. That's all I have for you today, although I could talk for hours, I will turn it over to the next person.
Thank you, Ariel. Lisa from Carter.
Good afternoon, council. Can you hear me?
We can. Good afternoon, Lisa.
Good afternoon. It's nice to see you all. I'm sorry that it's still virtual, but it is nice to see you all. I wanted to thank you for your time today, and always thank you for your time and your support of public transit, and how important Carter is in the economic fabric and the quality of life for our citizens. Just, I'll be very quick, just a few updates. As you are aware, Carter began offering free service to our veterans on our fixed route and our caravan services, and up until April, from January until April 13th, when we went fare-free due to COVID, we provided 19,000 trips to our veterans across our services, which I think is great, and we will continue to provide that service going forward. March of 19, we deployed three new electric-operated buses for our fixed route network, and we will continue on with our goal of being an all-electric fleet. We are funding probably for about nine more vehicles for electric vehicles, and then also received funding for new diesel vehicles, which will help us replace almost our entire fleet probably in, I'd say, six to seven years. It would have been sooner, pre-COVID, but everything's been pushed out a little bit. So we're very excited about those opportunities. Also, just so you have an idea of the matching, I know that you're probably all very well aware of it, the 3.1 million in city operating funds matches approximately 6.6 million in our federal and state funding. So it's vitally important in order for us to access the federal and state funding, that we have the great support that we do from you folks and the city. And then our 5310 program, which I think you had heard from CDOT earlier today, if not, if not last week, is that we are working with them to enhance our bus stop connectivity and make our bus stops and our shuttle shelters ADA compliant at 15 different locations. So that's a great project. When we finish with that, we'll have two shelters that will not be compliant, and those will be our goals to try to fix those going forward. So it's been a great partnership with the city to be able to do that. Next slide, please, more. As you all are aware, we are in the middle of doing our final system redesign with Jarrett Walker and Associates, you have heard from Jarrett a couple of different times. The report is completed, the next step is our public input, which was supposed to be during March and April, but obviously that's not going to, that didn't happen, and we're not sure when that will happen going forward until COVID is, has loosened up a little bit, but we are working on that. And you're aware of all the different, the two different plans that we have in there, our short-term and our long-term, so I won't go into those details. I forwarded that information to you, but the important piece is that we are looking at making improvements in frequency, which will obviously help our folks get to where they need to go a lot quicker and a lot sooner. Our coverage area will stay the same, we're also looking at expanding our coverage area, and we're also looking at improving our technology. Based on our technology, our mobility as a service, which is similar to our neighborhood services, which is our number five, our North Brainerd service, and our number six, which is our East Brainerd neighborhood service on demand, they go into the neighborhoods, pick folks up, and either bring them to meet one of the other routes, or bring them to their destination, depending on what they're doing. We're working with Double Map Masabi and Transit app to provide technology for the integrated planning of these trips. So like an Uber or Lyft, you'll be able to go right on your phone, book your trip, and it will tell you in real time how soon the bus is coming, you know, and when you will arrive at your destination. So very excited about that process. And just a quick update on Carter and COVID, we are currently close to 80% of our pre-COVID ridership with this limited service. We have our Saturday service out, Monday through Saturday. Sunday service has remained the same, but on our weekends, we are back to pre-COVID numbers. So we are putting a plan in place to look forward to moving back to full service, hopefully by the end of July. So that is where we're at. I want to thank you all for your support, and if you have any questions, you can always reach out to me. Take care. Thank you.
Tyler. Tyler Young.
Can everybody hear me all right?
Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
All right. I'm going to start just by talking a little bit about this council's tenure and some of the funding that we, that y'all have approved to put towards homelessness. In 2017, that was when we officially ended veteran homelessness. We were spending $205,000 in that budget. That work allowed us to be able to house over 350 veterans in two years, and now we're the ending veteran homelessness certification means that we have less than 10 homeless veterans at any given time, and we are able to house them each month. In the past three years, we've done a lot of work to really make progress on our overall homelessness issue, based off of our learnings on this. We created an interagency council of all of the community stakeholders that work in homeless homelessness. We built an action plan and shared that with you at the end of 2018. And we actually, with your help, invested into this plan a total of $1.3 million, and this amount thankfully is staying steady in FY21 budget with no reductions. That's an overall 564% increase in funding over those three years. Next slide. So as you know, in FY20, we created a homeless services division, going from one full-time staff person and a few part-time people, to now 13 people who are helping to fill some of the gaps that were identified in this plan. We have street outreach workers who identify and assess individuals, and they reach out to people all around the county, and the woods, under bridges, and connect them with services. In the past six months, they've identified and assessed 406 new individuals and connected them to services. We also have housing navigators that find housing for people, and we found that this greatly accelerates the amount of people we're able to house. I'm really pleased to report today, as of today, that we've permanently housed 563 homeless individuals in our community and 279 households. That is a big increase from last year, when we housed a little over 300 people in our community. We're seeing great, great progress in this, and it's also translating into progress in the homelessness issue overall. We've seen a 17% reduction in homelessness since November, and this is significant, because it's one of the first times in over five years that Chattanooga's seen a decrease in our homeless population rather than an increase. So these investments that, that we funded with your help are really making a difference. And for the next slide, I'm going to ask if we can bring in Janetta Langston. 563 people is a great number, but I wanted to give you a snapshot of what this looks like by example on the ground, so you can better understand how it works.
She's muted.
Hello, council.
Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can now.
Okay. My name is Janetta Langston, and I am one of the housing navigators for the homeless services division. I would like to tell you a story about one of my people who I just housed, his name is Todd. Todd has been homeless for the past six years. He came into our program during the COVID-19 pandemic, begging me to house him. He did not think that I would be able to house him because he have two evictions. I told Todd that I work very closely with a lot of landlords, and I have a great relationship with my landlords, and that I was going to do the very best that I can to house him. I reached out to one of my landlords, and I told him, I pleaded Todd's situation, and I told the landlord what was going on with, with Todd. I told the landlord, Todd just needs a second chance, just give him a second chance. The landlord heard my story, he listened, and he told me, he encouraged me to apply, helped Todd apply. So I helped Todd apply. To make a long story short, the very next day, I got a call from the landlord, and the landlord told me he is good to go. I picked up the phone, I was so excited. I picked up the phone, I called Todd, I said, hey Todd, I got some good news. I said, guess what? I said, you have been approved. When I tell you, I have never seen a person cry like this in a long time. He cried, and he thanked me, and he kept thanking me, he thanked me so many times, I lost count of it. He didn't even know what this unit looked like. Only thing he knew is that he was going to be off the streets. He signed his lease a couple of days after, so he was able to build a unit. He broke down again and cried, because not only was I able to house him, I was able to convince the landlord and house him in a beautiful, high-end unit. And in his own words, he said, Ms. Langston, thank you so much, I am now living in my mansion. And that touched my heart, and thank you all for everything that you have done to make this possible for Todd, because without the funding, he would not be able to, to be housed. So I really do appreciate you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janetta. Now we'll go into some of our additional 360 degrees of, of care, our continuum of care, and we first hear from Coach Jennings. Laron Jennings.
Sorry, I was looking for him in the panelists.
Yep.
He's on.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Coach. Good afternoon.
How you doing? Thank you, council, for the opportunity to share real quickly, briefly. As you all know, YFD is, is a very broad department, like many others, but I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the Office of Family Empowerment today. I'd like to say one of the things we take pride in is we give people hope, like the young lady just mentioned three minutes ago, when they come to us, they're very down and out and disturbed because of their condition and circumstances. And one of the first things we try to do is just calm them down, settle them down, and help them understand we're here to help them without looking down on them and give them some hope. So one of the first things we do is assess their family needs to determine the best course of action to take, so that family could quickly be stabilized. And then we look at a long-term case management plan to move the family from dependent independence to self-sufficiency program, because we don't want families to continue to be dependent upon, we want them to realize their ability to take care of their own needs and give them the assistance when needed. We work, we're working with, focusing on our rent and mortgage payments, we worked with Donna Williams and her team, and ECD, help families realize that they can be stable during this COVID-19 pandemic, to settle families down and work with the landlords to get their, our rent and mortgages paid as well. Our, our energy assistance program, La Heat, has been very instrumental in helping us make sure that those families are stabilized as far as their energy bills are concerned. One of the key things that we do is pose families to community partners, and to collaborate with them, so we can minimize duplication and, and, and get the most out of the services that's in the community. And then finally, we do the data tracking with our service point program to share information and other services across the board as relates to the area agencies. The things that we'd like to pursue moving forward, we want to create more partnerships in the community, because we have the capacity to do that. For this upcoming year, we'd like to expand our partnership opportunities, I feel like we can get more resources out in the community by doing that. We also like to expand our family empowerment program. We have nine active families in our family empowerment program, we feel like we can at least manage up to 15, and that's the crisis management, and families with a strong wraparound services is moving rapidly towards self-sufficiency. And last, but not least, we'd like to expand our outreach program. We plan to be more in our YFD centers, churches, and expanding our outreach, so that we can touch more families with, with the outstanding services that we have to offer. So thank you all for what you've done in the past and what you'll do moving this budget. We feel like we can impact quite a few families and help them make a difference in their lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach. Chief Hoheiman of the Fire Department. We've got him.
Can you hear me?
We can. Welcome, chief.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council, for taking a moment to listen to what we've been doing with our social support. As you know, we started a program about a year ago called CFD Connects, which utilizes UTC interns to help us identify individuals that frequently call the 911 system for non-emergency type calls. And we're able to actually go see what these individuals need, usually their basic needs, that we're able to connect them with different resources. So with using the UTC interns, we're able to do a needs assessment and connect these individuals with available resources. So over the last number of years, our call volume has gone up dramatically with non-emergency type calls, upwards of 170 calls in May, and we're averaging around 150 a month of these non-emergency type calls. And all this goes on top of the service that we provide anyway, with the emergency type calls that we run on. But this puts us in a social support world that we haven't been in before, and we've had a lot of success with this program over the last year, in really being able to identify individuals that have specific needs and being able to connect them with the resources that they need. And we look forward to growing this program over the next years to come, and we really appreciate everybody's support, helping us do this. And it's just one small piece that we can provide when it comes to social support, in addition to all the great work that you've already heard from, from the other administrators. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Chief David Roddy of our Police Department. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Chief, good afternoon. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, sir. Yes, thanks for the opportunity. Just wanted to go over some of the programs that we've discussed previously, so you and the community can hear again just what your department does, especially connecting into those in a mental health crisis situation and/or sometimes presenting in a homeless situation. So the first one, and we are very proud of, is our connection with Joe Johnson about two years ago, in a memorandum of understanding to jointly go into a pre-arrest diversion program. This began with some state-based funding coming into Joe Johnson to not only help build the program out, but also to help actually build out the physical space within their structure on the North Shore as well. We worked collaboratively with Joe Johnson to help build and understand the best way to get individuals that may have had their first encounter with CPD into Joe Johnson themselves. So not only the physical structure, but also they, they managed to build out a pharmacy section, their in-house treatment area, just the overall fantastic program that they have in that facility. What we did in the beginning is we identified certain crimes where the victims What we did in the beginning is we identified certain crimes where the victim of the crime is an essence society. Things such as public intoxication, public urination, things where there's not another victim to the other side of the equation. And if the individual that has presented that type of behavior, whether it's an officer observing it or responding to a call for service, if they've identified that individual is also having a prior relationship with Joe Johnson, then they will work to be able to transport that individual directly over to their facility instead of taking them to jail. That way, we don't just keep perpetuating the cycle. That way, we can get that individual, if it's a meds issue, if it's a treatment issue, if it's an overlay of all of that, they can go directly into the care and custody of Joe Johnson. Our officer gets back in service, and maybe we start a different, healthier path for that person. Another way is the crisis intervention training, as we've spoken at length, is an in-depth de-escalation and crisis intervention training that our officers go through. At this point, we're in the neighborhood of about 120 to 130 CPD officers that have attended this training, and we hope to have more attend this coming year in either one or two classes that are jointly carried out between us and other law enforcement agencies in the area. This puts a number of crisis-trained officers out on the street and in other capacities within the department so that they can respond directly into situation with an individual in crisis. So we can figure out the best way to handle that. What is the resolution to this for that individual? And then lastly is the overlaid continuing partnerships that we have with many of the great advocacy's that are in the area, whether those be down in 11th Street, Community Kitchen, Clinic. You name it, the officers are involved in the inter-agency council on homelessness as well. So we can figure out which ways that officers, if we are the first ones called, what are other ways to deal with it that are non-traditional methods in law enforcement? So I just wanted to take this opportunity, and I appreciate it, to just let you know the great work that your police department has done in recent years to try and find different ways to come to better resolutions.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Jermaine Freeman and Mr. Ruben Mariante. All right, we have Jermaine, and we're working on Ruben.
All right, I'll go ahead and get us started. Lydia, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Yes, thank you, counsel. Jermaine Freeman, Deputy Chief of Staff to Mayor Andy Burke. And so the administration worked alongside the city council to answer questions and address concerns as we do every year during budget review. Then in late May, we all watched the unjust killing of George Floyd. This sparked a call for reviewing police policies and how municipalities serve Black and Brown communities and bond to nonviolent emergency calls. We immediately reviewed our policing policies to ensure the safety of residents and officers. We then looked at ways to reinvest some of our police budget to be more community and social work-driven. And so what we did was we created the Office of Community Resilience, which is now a new division within our Department of Youth and Family Development, with more than $1 million that we were able to use to create this new office. This new office will bring together a coherent office that can align efforts to support our citizens, including aligning our efforts on social work services, including to support victims of crime, recidivism reduction programs, such as helping individuals to use resources like the RestoreMyRights.com empowerment toolkit, supports for justice-involved youth, including mentoring and diversion initiatives, neighborhood-based planning to help our communities better work with RPA, CEDOM, and economic development, and then budget analysis to help us form policy recommendations and to look at ways that law enforcement and community members are interacting. So we are very excited about the possibilities that the Office of Community Resilience will provide, and we look forward to seeing where it goes and finding new and innovative ways to continue to reduce the ways that our community interacts with the police department. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ruben Mariante from the Family Justice Center.
Good afternoon, counsel. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Ruben.
Good afternoon. So besides continuing to provide care for victims of intimate partner violence, domestic violence, and family violence, the Family Justice Center has begun to implement a couple of changes. One of them is we are no longer operating under a general memorandum of understanding where we're transitioning to agency-specific agreements that are negotiated to identify the strengths of each agency so that we can be more efficient in our service delivery. We are also consolidating intake processes as well as referral processes. So if a client comes in through any one of our partners and needs additional services from another one, an additional intake is not needed. And one of the things that we are being very intentional about is being able to focus on education prevention and awareness. So we are currently co-chairing a committee with the Hamilton County School Board that addresses social emotional learning. And by doing so, we are trying to identify barriers to accessibility of mental health services as well as being able to provide services to not just the students, but the parents, caregivers, foster parents, or anyone who is caring for the child, as well as educators and faculty within the school system. So that is something that we are focusing on in the new incoming budget.
Laura.
You and Daisy Madison will wrap us up. Daisy Madison, and did you say someone else? Oh, no, I'm sorry. She will wrap us up, was my... Thank you.
Hey, can you hear me?
Good afternoon, Daisy. Yes, we can.
Hi. Thank you all for the opportunity to address the budget once again. And I always, if I get the mic, if you will, I like to take the opportunity to say thank you and to you all. I recognize all of the hard work that has been put into this process by the budget staff, but not only the budget and finance staff, but all of the fiscal analysts and administrators and departments, community partners and so forth through their offers and so forth, submitting ideas to help us to make this budget move this crisis. So I want to say thank you, and special thanks to our budget chair, Councilwoman Birds, and council chair and all of the council members. Thank you. We appreciate you listening to all of the administrative team and members of the community to talk about some of the great programs we will continue in this budget. As the mayor has said many times in the past several months, the toughest times brings out the best in our people. Certainly, we have seen that time and again through the diligent and tireless work of our employees, through the compassionate service of community partners working to educate our kids, find housing for the homeless, provide COVID testing in the most vulnerable, and through the cooperation of Chattanoogaans who understand how serious the crisis still is and are working even now to limit its damage to our community. In addition to the $255.4 million general fund, this budget includes 13 other funds for a total operating budget of $340 million. It includes $29.6 million in use of reserves, including $3.5 million from the general fund to help finance $156.5 million of the first year of a five-year capital improvement plan. The grand total of all of the budget for this year is $520 million. It is built in a crisis with a projected loss of $8.4 million, as Mara has stated. It is predicated on economic assumptions that are subject to change at a moment's notice as long as COVID is still an ongoing threat. Resulting unavoidable costs related to the pandemic covered with significant revenue loss have created an unprecedented challenge that is unpredictable in its effect. This budget assures that promises made to our retirees are kept and funded. Obligations to bondholders who have invested in our city will be paid on a timely basis. That our most valuable resource, our employees, will continue to be paid at current level and receive no cuts in benefits nor increase in their contributions for those benefits. The homeless will be cared for along with many other social services through continued community partnerships that leverage maximum support from the public and private sector. Capital investments in public infrastructure is maintained at a level that ensures continued strong fiscal position and long-term sustainable growth. And last but not least, this budget has responded, although not enough for many, to the demands of the community with respect to the allocations for public safety dollars in a strategic manner that assures a well-fought out plan that is sustainable and effective for FY '21 and years to come. Thank you, counsel, for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Daisy. Mara?
Yes, sir.
Does that conclude it?
Presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Budget Chair.
All right. Ms. Lydia, if you could take the screen down for us?
Yes, sir.
And we have Councilwoman Mitchell followed by Councilwoman Coonrod.
Well, I would be glad to yield the councilperson Coonrod if it's about the presentation we just got. Mine's a little bit different.
All right. Councilwoman Coonrod, about the presentation?
Yes, just got a couple of questions about it. Are we able to put it on our website so people who are not in attendance to this 3:00, 3:30 agenda session, they can view it? And can we also receive a copy so we can email it to our constituents so we can make sure that they know what services that we have available that's being offered? And you know, how we can get them plugged into the services?
Yes, ma'am. Be happy to do both of those. Absolutely. Thank you for wanting it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the other part is that the Office of Community Resilience, the recidivism reduction, is there anything that we can really add to that outside of helping with expungements, which we know Shawana Kendrick do that pretty much? What about workforce, that kind of stuff, like we have jobs or like the housing? Because that recidivism reduction comes with more than just getting my background clean.
It does. I agree. Yeah, so the first thing that the office will happen for the office as soon as the budget is approved, the mayor has said that he would like to convene a working group and a community task force to set up the parameters of what the office needs to address and how it needs to address them. So community partners will be brought in to look at all of those different spokes that will make up this office, and that's a huge part that needs to be worked on. I agree.
You good, Councilwoman?
I love to be a part of that conversation. I mean, I just don't want this to be another department that we're just putting together and nothing is really done because the issues that we have under the Office of Community Resilience are very important. Not that other areas are not important, but everything under this list pretty much I'm passionate about, and you know, housing, wish that was under there. But when I look at the neighborhood-based planning, the thing about that, I'm not, I think that's great, RPA and economic development, but to my understanding, that's what we've already been doing. And when concerns from community members are, they're asking for specific things and planning around it, it's simply not happening. So how can I be reassured that this neighborhood-based planning, that those things will be implemented into those communities, what community members are being asking? In some of these communities, we're still waiting on updated plans from things that neighborhood-based planning implemented back 10 or so years ago. So what will actually change?
That's exactly why it was added. There were some folks who have looked at this list of things that the Community Resilience Office will undertake and have thought that neighborhood planning shouldn't be as a part of that group. And I was afraid that's where you were going when you first started speaking, and I was going to argue against that, argue with you. So I'm glad I didn't have to do that because I agree with you, Councilwoman, and it's such a huge part of making a community whole. And that's another component that has to be at the table. So all I can tell you is that it is a huge step, that it's at the table, and that it is known and stated by the passage of this office that it is important and that the resources will be put towards it.
All right. And then one last question, Chair, if I may, is that Mara, when we're talking about the direction of who's going to lead this Office of Community Resilience, I know the community input and getting faith leaders and so on and so forth, but the bottom line is whoever will be deemed as the director, they have to have a passion to really want to do the work. Not taking away from anybody who may apply to the work, but what I don't want to see happen is, what we've seen in previous budgets is that we're moving people who've been working under grants and filling positions with those individuals and then putting out another bid to say we need to hire some additional folks. And everybody is not going to be cut out to do the work of what's needed in Office of Community Resilience, and that's understandable. But, and I know some people, you know, they accept the jobs and saying that I can do it, but once they get in it, the work isn't being done. So I really want to see the right person get into the role so we can, and who's going to speak out and work with people to make sure that we're addressing these issues. Otherwise, it's just going to be another Band-Aid to say we just created something. Yeah, I'm hopeful, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Bird?
Thank you, Chair. Just Mara. Awesome, awesome, awesome presentation. You and your team are the bomb. I just, one thing echoing what Councilwoman Coonrod said, the only issue is so many people, some people know Mara, but some people don't want to know. So I want to make sure that we put this out. I want to send this to the radio stations. Every station in Chattanooga, talk radio, music radio, everyone needs to see this so they'll know what's going on. I want to see this. I want to send this to the newspaper. I want a copy of it. Every councilperson, I want to share it on Facebook, Instagram, social media, just to show the work that's been done. And we know the narrative, well, that's not enough. But it just shows that you guys have the compassion and the heart to do the right thing, and I've known this for four years since I've been here, that you want to do the right thing. And so often, people close a blind ear to what's going on. So, I mean, a blind, you know, ear to what's going on. So I just want to make sure we get the word out. So please send it to me. Please, please, please. And if any press release or something that you guys have, if you all can put that on the forefront just to show that this is the work, without any protest, without anything, this was already being done because Chattanooga is a great city, and we do want to be forward-thinking and do things the right way. One thing about the Office of Family Resilience, I think will be amazing, amazing thing to me, I'm going to say a few names that I want to just put on your brain. It's a group called PPCH. It's ran by a young African-American man named Alan Green. He has a nonprofit. It's a guy named Reach One, Teach One. His name is Reggie. He runs a nonprofit. Fatherly figure, dude named, guy named T. Jones and Brian runs that. The I Am Foundation ran by D'Angelo Davis, the Urban Policy Institute by Dennis Clark, and it's a young lady named Deborah Johnson who works in our community as well. I would love to see you guys bring these people to the table. If it's a board, if it's just to have conversation about how to build the Office of Family Resilience, I have the name of their companies and their phone number, Ms. Mara, and I will be forwarding them to you. And I would love to just see them at the table. Thank you. Just to have a conversation to, hey, we are doing the work right now out of their own pockets. They get no money from nowhere. They're doing it themselves. And I'd just like to see them come to the table and help, you know, steer this in the right way. And just thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you.
Councilman Bird, I would like to add one name to that. Deborah Gunton from Inspire, I think, needs to be at the table.
Thanks, thanks.
Yeah, when we do this. Councilwoman Burns, you got a comment to the budget before I go to Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes, sir, I do. I wanted to speak right after the presentation because the point of the presentation was really the good response we're having now. We can't go forward with all of these ideas and building on them unless we pass the budget. We're stuck with what we've been doing in the past, which everybody agrees wasn't enough. The second thing that I want to say that I, Mara, I thought you might mention, but over a year ago, we commissioned a disparity study. And we, the council, asked for a disparity study. because we thought that people in this community were be being treated differently. Black and brown people, people of all sorts of differences. And we got that report back. And, uh, and we found out that, yes, there were some things we needed to do. Once again, I want to get this budget passed so that we can start doing it. I don't want to be frozen in time. So just wanted to add that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for allowing me to have this presentation brought forward.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilwoman Byers. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Actually, Mara, one question before I go on to the next subject. What, I mean, I've just heard Councilman Byrd and Councilman Henderson submit names for folks that should be active or they'd like to see active in, uh, community resilience in as far as putting it together or making decisions. I've got to tell you, over the last couple of weeks, um, I've had some great conversations with some folks from District Two. We've all heard from them at one time or another, uh, over the last couple of weeks. And I would like to know how much access or how much input the mayor is going to take from the council on potential people to get on this advisory committee or board or whatever comes out of this thing? Because I think we, from a district standpoint, have a huge vested interest in this.
Absolutely. I'm sure he will. Um, and he hasn't, has not put together the, there's no, um, already formulated list of of people to be on the task force. So I'm sure that that, uh, that he will do that. And if, I love that some of you already have names. Uh, it sounds like probably all of you already have names. And, um, I know that he'll want to talk to each of you about that. So, um, that's a great question. Thank you.
Look forward to his call. Thank you, Mara. Okay, Mr. Chair, where I was going is, um, I hope that you've all had an opportunity to read what I sent out. If you haven't, please try to take the time to find it's under Jerry Mitchell, uh, uh, email address. What I sent yesterday was some information that I have received from constituents in District Two with some suggestions, not only from a budgetary standpoint, but also from a policy standpoint, as especially as it relates to the police department. But what I was wanting to say about it, if I could quickly do this, I think what we find ourselves listening to, um, is a group of citizens who want to see us help move towards a more equitable and inclusive community. And, um, that has proven a lot harder than it sounds when you just say it like that. I'm, I've told some people and at the risk of repeating myself, I'm going to say it again. There's been a few times in my lifetime, and I am a lifelong Chattanooga resident, and a few times when I've seen this door begin to swing open and what I would call fear has slammed it shut. And I, I would like to challenge us to take this information. And I'm, I'm, I'm going to be in supportive of supportive Councilperson Byers of want to pass this budget so we can move on to other things. I know the hearts there in the administration. I see some directional things that I'm not going to comment on today in the presentation that I, I say to myself, well, why would that be? So I, I just would like to ask the council, if you would, to help, um, me engage in a conversation as quickly as possible after this budget passes. I fully am aware of July one, we got to have some money. And to have this conversation now, it's, 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 it's a little, it's, it's going to take some diligent work on all our parts, plus the folks that are pushing us to do more and do better. And hopefully we'll do it together. And I would just like to ask that the council would would join me in that conversation. And if you would agree to do that, I, I guess we could figure out what format that would take. And, and, you know, do we put it in committee? Do, what, what do we put it in? Obviously, some of these issues that I've sent are budgetary issues. Um, I have all the confidence in the world in Councilperson Byers to help guide us through those discussions. I, some of them, there are policy issues, so maybe that stuff goes to public safety. And I have a lot of confidence in Councilman Byers' ability also. So I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think any of you are scared to take this on. At least that's, that, that's my opinion of each and every one of my colleagues. And I would ask you to join me in engaging in this discussion that can help us move towards or help the folks that are pushing us to move towards a more equitable and inclusive community. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll lower my hand now, so you.
And and let me just.
Well said.
Okay. But, but, thank you, sir. And and let me just tell you, I would be more than engaged in this conversation. I would say this, uh, and this is what I would request, is that our conversation, in order to be as productive as it can be, is that our conversations center around things that we would like to see funded, not defunded. And I would trust you to help us with that. Councilwoman, uh, I'll tell you what, let me, since I've already gone to Councilwoman Coonrod, let me go to Councilman Gilbert. Councilman Gilbert?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I agree with my colleagues, especially Councilman Jerry Mitchell. You know, one thing to put things on paper, but the other is to actually put into action. I think a lot of time, we as council have said, we want to see results. We want to see, uh, the outcome of what we have put in place. And I think that's part of it. I mean, once we get started, like the disparity study, you know, we don't need to put it on the shelf. We need to sort the low hanging fruit and push forward to make things equal or fair to all people in Chattanooga. So I think it's the beginning of it. I think that if we stay on it and actually ask questions during the year, uh, not just during budget time, but actually during the year to say, hey, where are we at with this? That's why I was pushing, uh, Mr. Tony Simon that, where, where are we going to start this? Are we going to start it one month, two months, when? So that we have a date that we can look forward to to see where we at with it, with the program. That's all programs. We need to say, where are we at with these programs? What is the outcome, not before, in the next year or so, but in three months, one month? Where are we, where are we at? So do we need to tweak it? Do we need to change it? Or what we need to do to make sure that all citizens have a fair opportunity to get fair pay or fair work? Thank you.
Councilwoman Coonrod? You're mute, you're muted. You're muted, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Jerry, you know, I'm one hundred percent behind it. Uh-huh. Thank you for bringing it up because I most definitely was. But I got, I to bring it back to, the point is this, the budget, we can make all the tweaks and the fixes with this budget. It's still ain't going to change. The racism, that's the lack of it. All the other root causes that we don't, we don't want to address and want to talk about. That's, that's what we first got to be honest about. Let's, let's get to the root cause and then move forward. We know that our state legislation, they're out until January. So this will be the perfect time to work on policies that need to be, be changed. And it's, it's not just the police department that we need to take a deeper dive in. Every department within the city of Chattanooga, we need to be taking a deeper dive in because it's more work, it's, it's a lot of work that each department can be. We need to look at their policies, all of it. It, it's not just the police department. And also, um, I just want to bring and ask, uh, my colleagues if we can invest in us doing a racial equity and reconciliation training. I think it'll be beneficial for all nine of us to go through it, to really see. I mean, and this is, it'll be some stuff that we, that's going to be hard. But we're in 2020 and it's time for us to deal with what it is. It's time for us to heal and get past the, the, the hurt and and different things that's done happened in our past and throughout history. Because those things are preventing work from being done from everybody, all people of color. Black, white, poor people, Hispanics, it's, it's preventing the work that needs to be done for every citizen to have an equitable opportunity. And that's, that's what I want to see. Fairness for everybody. We, like I said before, that tornado that ripped through East Brainerd, it exposed a lot of poor white people that are afraid, just like black people, to say, I want to get help. They don't have access, just like we don't have access. Nobody is talking about, let's go out there to make sure they got the COVID testing, none of that. So we got to make sure that we're helping all citizens, everybody in the city of Chattanooga because everybody need help. Every district got poor pockets of, of every shade that I done seen. And that I want to make sure that we're, we're helping everybody. And we got to put our biases aside to make sure that we're not leaving our one citizen behind. Just like I care about people that live in our family sites, or most people call them housing projects where black people mostly live. I care about those poor white people that live in those trailer parks as well. If everybody got to have access, and that's what our council should be about. So, uh, if we could, you know, get together about that racial licuita, you and she does a great job with it. She's already, uh, working with, uh, River City, the Chamber, Baywood, Lee Hurst, McClellan, everybody. And I think it's an opportunity for us to get training as well.
Councilwoman, is that something that you would like to take charge of?
Absolutely. And if somebody want to join me, I'm welcome to have you join me.
Sounds like Councilwoman Mitchell seconds your motion, so, uh.
I'll be glad to.
Board as well. All right, we, we do need to move on. Uh, we've got probably a little, right at an hour left. We do have Public Works Committee, Public Works and Transportation. And we also have a CDOT presentation. It is my understanding, Councilman Ledford, that we do need to postpone our, uh, planning and zoning item that we had or committee that we had on.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If you would allow me to do that, I, I would have greatly appreciated it. We're, we're going to be covering a lot of things, uh, that I think will be beneficial in, in conjunction with that conversation. So if, uh, yeah, if you would allow that to happen, that would be appreciated.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, uh, Mara?
Hi.
See you shortly, I'm sure.
Thanks.
I believe we are now on item six A under final. Another budget item.
An ordinance herein after, also known as the fiscal year 2020 to 21 operations budget, providing revenue for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2020 and ending June thirtieth, 2021, appropriating same to the payment of expenses of the municipal government, fixing the rate of taxation on all taxable property in the city, and the time taxes and privileges are due, how they shall be paid, when they shall become delinquent, providing for interest and penalty on delinquent taxes and privileges, amending Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Two, Section two dash two six seven relative to paid leave for active duty training and to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter thirty-one, Sections thirty-one dash thirty-six, thirty-one dash thirty-seven, thirty-one dash forty-one, and thirty-one dash forty-three, Sections thirty-one dash three twenty-two, and thirty-one dash three five four.
Any questions concerning this item? Councilman Mitchell?
Yeah, I hate, I hate to be this way, but what's the difference in five A and six A? Mr. Attorney?
Oh, those, one's, one's the current year budget and one's, uh.
One is for 2020 and one is for 2021.
Yeah.
There's an amendment because of the COVID issues as to 2020 here that you need to deal with to make sure things balance. And then 2021 is for the coming year. And that is the alternate version that we were in court on today on, uh, five A here.
Six A is, is a budget amendment.
Yes, sir.
That's correct, on the current year budget.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Daisy's got a great explanation for that, if you'd like to hear it.
I, I don't need to, Ms. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, all right, very well. I see no other hands. Let's move on, uh, under Resolutions seven A, please.
A resolution recognizing the city of Chattanooga as being essential and in support of fair and direct federal emergency support to reopen and rebuild local American economies.
All right, any questions or comments? I see no hands. Seven B, please.
A resolution adopting a five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2021 to 2025, subject to future revision, a copy of which is attached here too and made a part hereof by reference.
Questions or comments? Seven C.
A resolution expressing the intent of the city of Chattanooga to issue bonds in the aggregate amount not to exceed eleven million dollars of the city of Chattanooga, Tennessee, for the purpose of paying all or a portion of the costs of the following: Third, Fourth Street, Alton Park Connector, Field Lighting, Greenway Farm Conference Center replacement, Lake Resort Drive, Law Enforcement Training Center, Library Children's Area Roof Replacement, Midtown Pathway, Power to Protect, a resilient public safety microgrid project in partnership with EPP, Sidewalk Station fifteen replacement, YFD Center Improvements, and YFD East Lake renovation.
Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for, uh, Dr. Byers. We had a great session last year where we were able to actually see the bond purchasing process and talk about the coupons and what, do you think that that will be something we'll be able to revisit again this year for education purposes? Or, sure. I hope so. That'd be great. Thank you. Very. Thank you, Chairman.
Vice Chair Smith, no victory lap for Lake Resort Drive?
I'm still running that lap, sir. I'll let you know when I finally get tired.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, seven, uh, D, please. Oh, you're, you're muted, Ms. Lydia. You're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you. A resolution authorizing the interim treasurer to execute a contract in substantially the form attached with Fidelity Information Services LLC to provide merchant card services for the city of Chattanooga for one year, beginning July first, 2020, plus four one-year extensions for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
All right, any questions? If not, uh, seven E, please.
A resolution authorizing the chief information officer for the Department of Information Technology to extend the existing blanket agreement, purchase order number five five four one eight seven with BG Staffing Incorporated, related to contracted labor for twelve additional months, beginning May twenty-ninth, 2020 and ending May twenty-eighth, 2021. The first renewal of two optional renewals for an amount not to exceed one point one million each.
All right, questions or comments? All right. Uh, at this time in our agenda, we're going to have a departmental report by CDOT. Uh, Ms. Lydia, would you bring Blath Bailey in, please?
Yes, sir.
And, and while Mr. Bailey is coming on, I will just tell the council that, uh, we have made a lot of people happy on McKay Hill Road, uh, by getting their road paved. Mr. Bailey, great job on McKay Hill Road, and I've already started receiving calls of how happy people are.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Yeah, I don't know if it'll take a little bit extra time, but Greg Harold is, um, our project, our transportation project manager on, uh, he's, he's here. Okay, I was going to ask.
He's here, yeah. Ms. Lydia is on top, top of.
Thank you, Ms. Lydia. Thank you, uh, members of the council. This is a project we've been working on for a couple of years. And Greg has been managing the construction here lately, uh, most of the way complete. It's very exciting, especially related to some of the transit work that got highlighted earlier. Um, and I always invite our staff to, to provide these presentations if they want to. Greg was comfortable doing that, and he's put together a really short, uh, quick and informative presentation about a great project that we've been working on. So with that, um, I'll stick around if there's any questions Greg can't answer, but, uh, I'll let Greg take it from here. I assume Greg, you can, you can hear everybody and.
And, Ms. Lydia, uh, can I present my screen?
I don't think so. I'm sorry about that. I will fix that for you. Hold on just a minute.
Uh-oh, did, did you remove him?
So I can bring him back.
Oh, I, okay.
And he should be good to go.
We go. Okay. Mr. Harold, you'll have to unmute your mic. Can you hear us? There we go.
Sorry about that. I guess, are you seeing my screen currently?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for having me today. And I listened to a lot of your, uh, conversations today. And I think this, uh, falls right into place with, uh, mobility for. and I think this, uh, falls right into place with, uh, mobility for visually challenged and equitability and fair transportation for everyone. Uh, the Transit Stop Accessibility Improvement Project is, uh, a fifty-three ten grant that we secured through Carta, a partnership between Carta and CDOT, as Lisa Merit Nano said earlier. And it's, uh, the whole goal here is to prevent barriers to folks who are trying to get to a bus stop, to a transit stop. Uh, it came at a cost of five hundred and twenty-four thousand and ten dollars. Uh, we began construction late February, right as the pandemic started. Uh, but we're still on track for completion of all of our hard scape works by July twenty-seventh. Uh, locations are spread out all over the city, and, uh, we've got fifteen locations currently. And these locations were chosen by using the ramp deployment data that Carta has on their buses. Uh, we then correlated it with our, uh, map, CDOT's map of hotspots for where people may be traveling, such as medical facilities, uh, municipal facilities, things of that nature. So we were then able to pick the sites that best, would best help the most people. Um, and as you can see, they're distributed pretty well. Uh, the ones on this map that you see that are in green are currently in construction. The ones that are black are currently complete, and the ones in blue are starting this week. Uh, the yellow pins also represent future, uh, future locations. Uh, so, as you can see, they're, they're pretty well distributed. Most of them are in the urban core, but we have some out in Hickson, some out at Hamilton Place, uh, down by the state line in, in Rossville, a- as well as, uh, in St. Elmo by the state line. So what this is to fix, or a lot of times it's something as simple as tree roots, which heat the sidewalk. Or maybe there's a ramp that's too steep so that a wheelchair may turn over when trying to utilize the ramp. So what we've done is go in and correct these and done things, uh, simple things sometimes, such as put root barrier down underneath the sidewalks if the tree roots will not heat them again. Because as you can see, this is a large oak tree, it's likely to try again. But these products, which, uh, uh, Gene Hyde actually was a huge proponent of, I know, we all know Gene Hyde, uh, seem to help greatly in that instance. We've also created new ramps that are slider slopes, uh, and spots for bus stops, which are now going to be ADA accessible. We're, um, and they'll be installed soon as well. We really couldn't do this work, though, without our contractors and subcontractors to actually get out there, boots on the ground, and make this happen. Sometimes it seems like these projects just occur, but it takes a lot of hard work and dedication from these folks to make these product, projects a reality. Uh, and really, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think it's.
Okay, I'm not seeing any questions at this time. Must have done a thorough job. Oh, here we go, Councilman Gilbert.
I have one question, and I know the, this is covering the area, but I mentioned before, the Community Kitchen, uh, walkway is very, very difficult. Uh, I know, hopefully a bus do come through that way since, yeah, most of the homeless that in the area. Do we ever fix that, you know?
I, I'm not sure for certain if we did, but I'll take a look at it tomorrow when I'm out and about and let you know.
Appreciate it, sir.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, uh, thank you so much, Mr. Harold.
Thank you.
Uh, we appreciate you being with us, and, uh, Mr. Bailey, if any closing comments?
No, sir. Uh, I, I will add, uh, since you asked, Mr. Chairman, is, um, uh, I think Greg, while you're still listening, Kenny, uh, who was Greg's predecessor, was working on that, that issue with the heat of, of pavers on Eleventh Street. And I, I do think we developed a solution, but Greg will go check it out tomorrow, and we'll make sure we get back with you.
Okay, all right, great. Hold on just one second. I see a hand by Councilwoman Coonrod.
Thank you, Chair. Blath, I spoke with, not, this is not about the presentation here, but it goes with the Lake Resort Drive, the FEMA funds that was awarded. Um, I spoke with Alice Walker today at FEMA, and she assured me that FEMA funds were given to replace the, uh, slide that was outside of the Wilcox Tunnel. And, uh, for some reason, you know, that's just not happening. We was told that we didn't get the funding. If it's any way that you could provide me with the information to show that we did not get the funding, and if we did, I want to know why we didn't repair, uh, the site outside of Wilcox Tunnel. And that'd be good enough for me.
Yes, yes, ma'am, Mr. Councilman. We, we talked, Ms. Councilwoman, we talked about, um, that earlier, and I appreciate you providing that name. We'll follow up with Ms. Walker and, and reconcile what, what we think with what she's telling. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Bailey, that you joined us. Uh, on our agenda, uh, next item on our agenda is our purchasing. There's about six items. Uh, if you could pull those up, if, does anybody have any questions about any of our purchasing items for this week? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Let me get back to my agenda. All right, uh, June thirtieth agenda, you have your, uh, six weeks' agenda in front of you. Any questions, anybody has concerning that? Councilman Gilbert?
Well, this is hand for.
An old hand?
Old hand. Well, I have a question on the, on the, on the, uh, purchasing.
Okay.
On the, uh, sheet that, on potential contracts, I'm curious about some of the areas that's on here. I can't, it's like east side, volunteer, energy, Atlanta. Uh, can you tell me more about why we associate with these companies?
Here. Let, let me, let me ask you this, Councilman. Is that something, uh, that Mr. Simmons could email you on, or you want to do it right now?
Oh, he can email me, that's fine.
Okay, uh, Mr. Simmons is on, if, if you would, um, go ahead and reiterate your question so that he's.
On the sheet, uh, of the finance, where are we gonna renew contracts? On the first several lines on the beginning, I'm curious about some of these companies that we are working with.
Okay, okay. Uh, Mr. Simmons, uh, if you would get with, uh, Councilman Gilbert between now and six o'clock, I would appreciate that. Councilwoman Coonrod, is that a new hand?
Yeah, it's new hand about the, for next week.
The agenda for, the agenda for next week? That what you said? You broke up?
Well, it's gonna, it's actually gonna be, nevermind, it's 'cause it's gonna be on tonight, but just wanted to get information about the active duty training to pay leave for that. Is that for our, uh, police officers?
Which item were you referring to, Councilwoman?
For next week, under finance, the fiscal year budget. But it's on the revised agenda for today and tonight. You want to see it on there? Or did they remove it by the time I printed it off?
I'm not seeing, which item is it for next week? I, I'm looking at my folder.
It's on our revised version for the six o'clock meeting tonight.
Oh, I got you. Yeah, 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 I'll see it now.
Yeah, and I'm asking, what is that for our police officers?
Um, since that's, uh, Mr. Day, would you bring Ms. Daisy in?
Yes. Sure.
Or, or, I don't know. Ms. Daisy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, can you also answer Councilwoman Coonrod's question about our, uh, our, um, ordinance for next week? Which, that would actually, that's for this week too, right? Because that's a.
Yes.
That's first, first reading is this week, yeah.
Right, okay, and, uh, this is a, 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 a last-minute development. Um, and I thought we were addressing it next week, but here's what's happened. Uh, in, in looking at the law, the state law regarded a budget amendment that, uh, the only conditions under which you are allowed to spend money from reserves is in an emergence, emergency situation, and that emergency has to be declared. So the resolution is just gonna add lines that says, whereas COVID, whereas, um, uh, uh, the tornado and, and reference the specific TCA sections that basically then allows this council to have officially declared, um, those as emergencies under which we can amend the budget. Those are, uh, a technicality administrative correction.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, that's what, that isn't what Councilwoman was asking. She was talking about paid leave.
Well, she was referring, she was, you know, she was referring to this item, but.
Well, no, there's nothing in that item, uh, that changes from paid leave. It's just, uh, that's, that budget is, is, is written exactly the same as it's always written in the title of a budget. The amendments has to do with, uh, the items I just explained.
Okay, because, reason I'm asking, because we, we approving something this week, and then we going back in amending it, why we just can't put it on for what it's gonna be instead of vote for it and then amending it? Or does it have to be amended because we passing the, past the budget? That's what this item is for, for tonight?
Okay, this, this budget is an amendment to FY twenty budget. And that is, and, and it should be in both budgets where it is amending the FY twenty budget. First and second reading is amending the FY twenty budget.
Councilwoman, one is dealing with.
Right, it does say that for the first reading. It doesn't say amending, that's why I'm asking. What's the difference between the two?
I think it, it does. It says training and to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two. Now it's fixed.
Yeah, that's on the second read.
And.
The first, first reading says.
Yes.
First reading said an ordinance to amend.
Oh, well, mine's don't say.
They vote for.
The one for tonight, it just says. Okay, well, maybe I printed the wrong one.
Six, six, six A.
I have, didn't say.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have the city attorney with the hand raised.
Uh, I, I see him. I'm trying to clear up this issue first.
I think I can offer something to clear the issue if you'll let me in a minute.
Okay, uh, if you, if you can help out, Phil, go ahead.
Uh, while I've been running back and forth to court today, Valerie in my office was suggesting that maybe you needed some language talking about the, uh, COVID nineteen in your amendment to the budget ordinance. That's the reason for these amendments that would be added. And she was just simply adding whereas clauses to the beginning of that for a draft. You know, we'd need to have some authority to be able to substitute that on your agenda if you choose to do so. But it was giving references that, uh, President Trump declared the COVID nineteen public health emergency on a certain time. The governor has actually imposed an executive order declaring a state of emergency, and Mayor Burke has likewise declared a state of emergency here in this area, in addition to the fact that y'all have had a tornado hit a portion of your city. And that's the reason for your amendments to the budget ordinance.
Uh, but that amendment hasn't been, yeah, that, that's an amendment that we would like to add to the amendment.
And, and the only way you can add that is if y'all agree to add it to your agenda, and that's why we're not, um, it's not been included at this point, it would require some action by this body.
Right.
You good, Councilwoman?
Okay.
All right.
Well, I just, you know, didn't want to get back into, because they said, yeah, because they said we just just went through a little case today about this alternate version. I'm just trying to make sure I didn't miss the very first version, is, is what I'm saying. I don't want anybody else to think that we just putting alternate versions and that's it. So, I just want to make sure I'm in the clear and wanted to be on record in case we get took back to court again. That's, that's all.
And, and if y'all want to make statements this evening that you just simply add those whereas clauses to it, you can do that during the meeting. It's up to this body on how you do it.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Daisy.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, looking to our future considerations, there's not but one item on that, um, the flying disc club. Anybody got any questions about that? Okay, uh, before we go into Public Works and Transportation Committee, uh, Councilman Mitchell, the, the city attorney has requested an attorney-client privilege, uh, before we break to go to our six o'clock meeting. Uh, so is there anything else? Uh, Mr. Nob, is that what your hand is up for?
It, that, that was it, yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure I let you know on there. That, that, that and this, this subs issue here, no problem.
All right, if there's no, uh, if there's nothing else, Councilwoman Coonrod?
All right, thank, and I'm gonna make this quick, and I, I just want to ask the budget chair. Um, Councilwoman Burrs, now, with the passing of this budget, does that mean that the funds that the council had, those funds are automatically encumbered to go back to reserves or wherever they need to be? Or can we still make a decision on what we want to do with those remaining funds?
Yeah, we've, we've been working on that about several sessions ago. Um, you all, the idea was microphones and the idea, you brought up a bunch of different things. I don't have those minutes in front of me. And I asked council for permission, and in this case, it would be working with, uh, Vice Chair Smith. We were trying to get microphones, so the money we need, um, is, we're gonna take whatever's left over and use it. You said you wanted microphones, uh, because it wasn't enough to cover, uh, safety. Now, if there is, we'll use it, and right now, Vice Chair Smith is using, is, is researching what are the best microphones for us, because pretty soon we're gonna have to go back into session. So, uh, I'll be doing this week with Daisy, whatever it is we need to do to, uh, make sure that that's encumbered, if you will.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Just wanted to make sure I was gonna get my Black Lives Matter sign painted upstairs, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, hey, why not? The other thing is that all of you, all of you haven't gotten your expenses in yet, I don't think. Um, and it's hard for us to get our arms around exactly what we've got left. Uh, if you would please, please get those in, um, and then we'll take it from there. But several sessions ago, Councilwoman, uh, you gave me permission to work with whomever to cumber, encumber for whatever, and whatever with safety and microphones. So thank you, very good.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Mitchell, I am turning, uh, this meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we'll call the Public Works Transportation Committee meeting to order. Can I have approval of minutes?
Will to approve.
Is there anybody who needs approval of those minutes? Okay, we'll move on. Um, who is here, Lydia, from Public Works to do these resolutions? There's four of them, one this week and three next week, and I'll be out of your way, Mr. Chair.
Dustin Holland has got his hand up, Ms. Lydia.
He is in.
Nice touch.
Hello, sir.
All right, uh, could you please read the resolution for today, seven F?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works to execute a contract with Orange Grove Center Incorporated for the agreement to manage and operate the recycling collection centers and refuse, refuse collection centers for fiscal years 2021 through 2025 for an amount not to exceed three million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and eighteen cents.
Don't see any hands, counsel. All right, in that case, uh, let's move to next week, Resolution seven C, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works toward contract number W two zero, zero, one, one, two zero one, J to JDH Company Incorporated of Chattanooga, Tennessee, replacement roofing system for multiple buildings at MBW WTP in the amount of three hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars, plus a contingency amount of thirty-two thousand, for an amount not to exceed three hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars.
No hands, okay, let's read D, please.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one for tri-state roofing contractors LLC of Chattanooga, Tennessee, relative to contract number M eighteen, zero, zero, two, two, zero, one, the replacement roofing system for the Bessie Smith Center for an increased amount of ninety-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents, for a revised contract amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents, plus a contingency amount of thirty thousand dollars. Plus a contingency amount of $30,000? For an amount not to exceed $425,839.30.
All right, let's move to E.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works to award contract number E-20010201 to Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated Disaster Recovery Management Services Contract? For year one of a four-year term blanket contract for a contract amount of $261,214.
That was a photo finish, but I believe it was Chairman Henderson first. Councilman Ledford.
I'll, I'll yield the, I'll yield the chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Justin, it, it, uh, I, I guess my question sort of revolves around? How much longer do you think we will, uh, retain Jacobs Engineering around? Uh, the city? It seems like ever since I've been on the council? Uh, we've had a contract with Jake's, um? This is, this is for a specific amount, amount, a blanket contract, not an up to amount, which I'm a little? I guess confused. Most blanket contracts are for up to an amount. So what's? Kind of explain, if you would, why is this a blanket contract for a specific amount not to, not for an up to amount?
Okay, and the, and we may need to revisit that. I'll, I'll double back with Justin Steinman here in just a moment. But, and we, if, if that needs to be amended, uh, thank you for bringing it to my attention. If that needs to be amended, we will do that, and I'll, I'll follow up. This basically, this is a contract that supersedes a current emergency contract that we have with Jacobs Engineering, specific to disaster recovery assistance. That was required by FEMA. The, this contract is a little bit different than what the, than the contract that we pre, that we currently have with Jacobs Engineering? Who provides pro, uh, program management of our consent decree. And so they've been, uh, they've been employed by us since 2013 as our program manager for, specifically for the consent decree. But this is, uh, this would function as a blanket contract? To help the city, uh, with FEMA documentation and reimbursement? For the February, uh, 2019 floods, the April 2020 tornado? COVID-19 declared disasters? And with a set duration for all of those activities. They also will begin work on emergency preparedness plan to facilitate rapid response for future disasters? That makes them available on an as-needed basis in the future, uh, in, in the case of a disaster. Uh, renewals for this, uh, for the future years beyond year one would be solely retained, would be really to solely? Just retain Jacobs for assistance on an as-needed basis. I hope that helps answer your, your question, and I will, um, I, I see Justin Steinman is now available? To respond to that. Uh, Justin has worked closely with, uh, our engineering team? To, because this is, uh, a little broader than just the disaster recovery, recovery for facilities that Public Works oversees. I'll, I'll let, I'll yield it to Justin for a bit to respond to your question.
I think, um, Mr. Holland did a, a good job summarizing that. Really, you know, in this case, Jacobs is providing support services for us to help us in recovering as much? In way of funds as we can for all three disasters. This contract's necessary because FEMA regulations require that we have a competitively bid contract passed a, uh? A set amount of time for an emergency, which is the, the contract we've currently been operating under. So the reason for the set amount is, is we have a, a set amount of work that will be required, and most of it will be for? The tornado work, but then the blanket contract will allow us to retain them for longer-term work, which is, is something that? FEMA really encourages municipalities to do. Ultimately, like if, if we had Jacobs as well as a debris removal and debris compliance contractor onboard? It would mean the next time we have a major disaster, we won't spend several weeks, you know, getting those folks onboard. We'd be able to get going right away. And get things. I mean, and I think honestly, city staff did an incredible job responding to the tornado. But this would allow us to bring that capacity of those, like debris removal contractors onboard even sooner? And make sure that we're as prepared as we can be for future disasters.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that, Justin.
Answer.
Sir?
Did you ever get your question answered?
Well, uh, well, I had several questions, and yeah, I think I under, I, I understand. I'm, I'm still a little confused just on a higher level. Thank you, sir.
Chairman, Chairman, I did, uh, I, I will, we will double back and make sure that that's not a up to, um, amount unless Justin knows the answer right off.
Uh, I mean, it is a not to exceed amount, and the reason we're? We're going in that direction is because all, all of the reimbursement for the FEMA activities is actually? It's a percent reimbursement we're allowed by FEMA and that will, that five percent basically of the total damage? Damages that they award us reimbursement for, on top of that, can be used for costs like Jacobs, um, reimbursement, and so? We're doing our best to like, keep the, the levels of these contracts below what that estimated percentage would be, so there won't be any out-of-pocket cost to the city.
Thank you, Council.
You're given up?
We're good.
We'll stop there. Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, most of that was covered. I was going to go down the FEMA road for just a moment with that. But, uh, I'll circle back, uh, to two questions. One, Justin? Will, uh, does Jacobs will have any role in the resilience study that we funded, uh, what, a couple of weeks ago? That's going to start? Number one question, and number two might be for Justin Steinman? And that is, uh, there's a number associated to the services that Jacob helps us, uh, get FEMA dollar-wise. Do you know what that number is? I, I've, I've heard it once before. I know it's pretty substantial.
Well, Councilman, I will answer your first question. Stan Tech is the? Consultant who is helping with the resilient, who's contracted with the city for the resilience study. So Jacobs Engineering is not a part of that unless they were subcontracted for a part of it, but I, and I'm not familiar with that. The details of that yet. And I will ask Justin to help? Your second part.
Uh, Councilman, or were you asking kind of like what we estimate the total damage amount to be?
We were able to recover. I know without, without the help of Jacobs, when it's, when we're dealing with FEMA, that, they're very instrumental in, in getting that pipeline. Fast access to the FEMA dollar. I know they play an incredible role? With that, and I was just wondering if you have a dollar amount. If you don't, you can touch base with me offline.
I mean, a, as far as our total damages, we think it could be up to, to 12 million in terms of cost to the city and? Uh, eighty-seven and a half percent of that is something we can get reimbursement for. If, is that kind of, does that help?
Yes. Perfect. Yep, thank you. Just trying to assign a value to Jacob's services, that so people have an idea. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Gilbert?
Thank you, Chair. Um, speaking about, um, disaster, uh? My understanding after, after burning pit, that it's getting pretty full and the chipper is down. Do we have alternatives to, um? Remove that debris? So we can bring more in since we having a lot more storms now?
Well, Councilman, I'm not sure that, um? I, one, I don't know about a problem that, uh, is causing a delay in any service, but I can follow up? And get back with you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any more questions of Mr. Steinman or Mr. Holland? I don't see any hands. Uh, thank you, Justin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank, thank both of you, Justin's. Mr. Chair, did we set, reset a date for the steep slopes here?
Well, I, I'm looking at our, uh? Strategic planning meeting on the seventh. We do have two committee meetings next week. But I would, uh? Kind of defer to Councilman Leopard if he thinks he can arrange everybody by that time.
If it's, if it's, if it's the desire of the council, I appreciate you giving the time, but I could make it happen next week if you want. If you, if you'd like to wait till? Planning and zoning on the seventh, um, that would give a little bit more time to prepare some packets for you and email them to you, so you could probably have some? Advanced, um? Presentations and not ask questions on the fly, so to speak.
I was thinking strategic planning on the seventh. That would be a strategic planning, though.
I'm, I'm totally prepared for that and can have a package ready in advance for you, so to help, uh, help follow along.
If, if the council is okay with that, let's, let's plan on strategic planning on the seventh for the, uh, rescheduling of the steep slopes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, just a couple of, of things. Uh, one? I don't need it today, but I'd like to, you know, depending on the results of tonight's vote, I'd, I'd, I'd like to? Begin to schedule something as it relates to? Uh, budget amendments and things like that to begin as quickly as possible. I'm not saying let's not do that. I'm just saying I? I don't, well, I will, I, I won't let us forget about that, so hopefully we'll, we'll figure out a time as quickly as possible to begin that discussion.
Well, let, let's figure out what that structure even looks like?
Okay.
Uh, before we schedule it, and then we can, we'll, we'll put it on.
Okay, sounds great. I'm also going to be coming to the council. Not sure exactly, but, uh, there's a lot of city passing? Ordinances as it relates to wearing masks outside. I'm not sure that? Approach is right for Chattanooga because of our? Ability to enforce? But perhaps we could do something that encourages businesses to help us with that effort because we are still? It seems to be, maybe we've plateaued, but certain days we seem to be still rising, certain days we seem to be plateauing. Uh, and as long as we're talking about certain days, I guess we're all over the board, so I, I, I think we probably ought to have a discussion about wearing masks in public.
Uh, let's put it on the agenda, uh, for strategic planning to discuss. I don't anticipate? Uh, the steep slopes taking the whole, uh, strategic planning time. Do you, Councilman Leopard? Okay, thank you. Anything else? If not, I think we need to hop off and go into Councilwoman Coonrod. You got something to follow up?
Yes, um, how many people? We got signed up to publicly speak for the comment section?
We have? Looks like twenty-eight.
And do we still have the same rules as last week, or we have to implement new ones if so?
Mr. Attorney, why don't you just go ahead and address that, please, sir? Explain it like you explained it to me.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, last week you adopted rules that would at least require, uh, anyone that was speaking on an item, uh, at the end of budget? To not exceed one hour and would not allow, uh, anyone to have more than two minutes per item to get the most opportunity for more people to speak. Uh, it, it is up to this body to, uh, either continue that, uh, rule tonight or not. Uh, you, you have that right as a time, place, and manner restriction so that y'all can get home at some point in the evening. But it's up to this body, uh, by a vote of, uh, or, or to, by acclamation to allow those rules to continue this week.
So, Mr. Attorney, that is something that we would, we would have to address that again tonight at six.
Beginning of the meeting, yes.
If we continue those rules, Councilwoman Coonrod.
Okay, and then, uh, on our website, when I went and looked at it, and when you sign up to speak, it says specifically, I think, number three? That you can, to address council on issues that's within our jurisdiction? The things that we cover. Anything relating to the county, like the education, the sheriff's department, all of those things? That's not under the city council. So how do we address that? Because at that, and I get it? We should be, you know, Councilwoman made a, a great speech earlier about that, like we should be looking into these things. However, we're not the legislating bodies of those things, and it, it need to be directed to the appropriate government? That handles that. So, uh, how do we handle that when they start talking about education and all the other stuff that we're not over? Because it clearly states it on the form that we're, they're not supposed to talk to us about that.
Yes, ma'am, the.
Or we need to change the form, either way.
Well, until y'all tell me differently, the same instructions will be read each time someone is getting ready to speak. And the issue for the chair, if they start going way afield, would be up to the chair to stop that and then go on to the next speaker.
Ca, Councilwoman, let me interject here. You can always call for a point of order if you don't feel like it is, uh? Appropriate for someone to be speaking on that subject. You can always? Ask for a ruling.
Oh. Hey, I'm just, you know, either way, I, you know, just if we gonna allow them to speak about anything, we may need to think about updating it on the website.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, any other questions or concerns before we hop off and go to our attorney-client? Lydia, if you would? Uh, let's close out this session, and then we will, uh, come back in attorney-client.